And I'm Marie convening to open session and calling to order the regular Board of Education meeting for Indian Prairie School District 204 on Monday, February 24th, 2020. Jackie, will you please call the roll?
Mr. Carubas?
Here.
Mr. Resak?
Here.
Ms. Peel?
Here.
Mr. Rising?
Here.
Ms. Demming?
Here.
Ms. Grover?
Here.
Ms. Donahue?
Here.
And we are all present. Mr. Carubas, will you lead us in the pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We have several board salutes today. I'm going to start with Ms. Grover.
District 204 students named presidential scholars. The board salutes 10 District 204 students who were recently named U.S. Presidential Scholars, one of the nation's highest honors for high school students. Congratulations to the following Niqua Valley students: Tyler Chen, Anushka Gupta, Arneet Gortata, Jessica Mann, Kiana Mohammedian, Diane Patel, Rushil Valela, and Courtney Riede. And congratulations to Arna Flande from Wabonzi Valley and Emily Kohlberg from Matia Valley. These students are recognized as some of the nation's most distinguished seniors. Congratulations to all on this stellar achievement.
Thank you, Ms. Grover. Mr. Rising?
The board salutes the business office of Indian Prairie District 204 on once again receiving their certificate of excellence in financial reporting for the fiscal year ending 2019 by the Association of School Business Officials International. The award represents a significant achievement and reflects the district's commitment to transparency and high-quality financial reporting. Congratulations to Jay Strang and everyone involved in his business department.
Thank you.
The board salutes 5th grade Peterson Elementary Student Neil Seegri and 4th grade Springbrook Elementary Student Jeremy Loff, who are competing in this year, in this season's America Ninja Warrior Junior on TV. So cool. The junior ninjas will face off on head-to-head courses with a variety of physically challenging obstacles. Neil was featured in the premiere episode this past weekend. He also competed at the Athlete Warrior Games National Finals and the National Ninja League World Finals. Jeremy will be featured in Episode 10 later this season. Congratulations to Neil and Jeremy on your accomplishment. So cool.
That is cool. And Ms. Peel?
The board salutes the 21 students from seven middle schools who participated in the District 204 spelling bee. This year's competition went 12 rounds. Two 7th grade students and one 6th grade student competed in the final five rounds to name the champion. Chloe Roxas from Fisher took first place. Ashan Sharma from Scullen took second place, and Ryan Mitchell from Fisher took third place. Chloe captured the first-place title with the word pomegranate. Congratulations to all involved.
I'm trying to-
I can't think of it either. I was trying to think.
I checked, they spelt it right.
There you go. We now thankfully move to the student representative report. Brooke Puggies from Matia Valley High School. Hi, Brooke. Welcome back.
My name is Brooke Puggies, and I am the class of 2021 Executive Board Representative for MB Student Government. I am very excited to join you all tonight. The Orcasus Showcase was a huge success on February 7th and February 8th. Congratulations to our incredible performers. Winter scenes, our student-directed plays, were a huge hit February 13th through the 15th. Great job to our directors and students. Last week, we had Spirit Week and our winter pep assembly. The students and staff had lots of fun during our Spirit Week. We had our Black History Month celebration on February 20th with various performances from our students in the Chicago Muntu Dance Theater. Tuesday, February 25th, we will honor 349 IP Scholars at 7:00 PM in the MB Auditorium. Congratulations to our IP Scholars. Congratulations to the Varsity Girls Bowling Team for being two-time state qualifiers, and to the Varsity Cheer Team for being seven-time state qualifiers. We are very proud of our athletes. That is all I have for the February Board Report. Thanks, everyone, and until next time, go-go Mustangs. Thank you.
Thanks, Brooke. It is now time for public comment for non-agenda items. Thirty minutes is allowed for public comment, and each person is limited to three minutes. When addressing the Board, we ask that we respect the confidentiality and safety of our students and school district personnel. We also ask that those addressing the Board be cognizant that this is an open meeting and is available to all age groups, and as such, ask that you consider who the audience members are this evening and keep comments age-appropriate. Public comment represents the voice and the opinion of the speaker. There will be no feedback from Board members during the meeting, but follow-up will be provided by an administrator as appropriate. We have one speaker, and that's Becky Simon. Welcome, Becky, and come to the podium. Welcome.
Thank you for having me here tonight. Hello, my name is Becky Simon. I am with the League of Women Voters of Naperville. Since we work with District 204's Matea, Wabonzi, and Niqua Valley High Schools, I wanted to take a moment to introduce our organization to you and talk about what we do. We are your friendly, local civics geeks. I could talk here all night about election equipment if you were interested. League is a nonpartisan organization. We do not endorse or oppose candidates for public office. We register voters, we hold candidate forums, there is one tomorrow night if we don't have a blizzard, and we publish online voter guides. The Naperville League has a special emphasis on what we like to call "future voters." Our goal is to help students become lifelong voters. When we work with high school students, we teach them how to canvas in low-turnout precincts to increase voter turnout. During presidential and gubernatorial election years, League conducts mock elections in the high schools using real election equipment so that students, all students, freshmen, sophomores, juniors, and seniors can learn by doing. League distributes birthday boxes to students turning 18, filled with information on how to register to vote, a few pieces of candy to sweeten the deal, and a handwritten note from a community member. In February, League helped sponsor District 204 students going to the Iowa caucuses. So, working with students is the perfect antidote for political cynicism. We love it. League does not receive funding from District 204. We do not use District 204 resources, except for the occasional borrowed table. Our work with District 204 is our investment in the future of democracy. If you ever have any questions about the League of Women Voters of Naperville, you can contact us at LWVnaperville@gmail.com. Thank you.
And we now move to our consent agenda and superintendent report. We always begin with the superintendent report. Dr. Sullivan?
Okay, I'll start with last week's Governor's Budget Address. So, the one big caveat to the education dollars that Governor Pritzker talked about was the progressive income tax amendment. So, if you heard his speech, parts of the budget will be held back pending the outcome of the November progressive income tax amendment, and that includes a portion of school funding. So, if the budget that he proposed is ultimately passed in its current form, it will leave uncertainty in the planning of school district budgets across the state, something that we had hoped we had, was a thing of the past with evidence-based school funding. So, I know that this is impacting how we are currently planning our budget for the upcoming school year, which I know Jay will share with you during the April budget forecast presentation. We had a really wonderful student-teacher open house, our second one, last week. It's still middle school. We had 47 student teachers who attended. Eight of them were Indian Prairie graduates. We always like seeing our graduates. They represented nine university programs, so they had the opportunity to meet a number of building principals, district administrators, learn about our district and what we look for in our teaching candidates. They had the opportunity to have their resumes critiqued and even participate in some mock interviews, and I actually think Dr. Echols maybe had some not-so-mock interviews going on in his corner. There was a lot of energy and excitement in the room, so we want to give big kudos to Doug Akiris, Carrie Beth Harry in his department, Candy Machelli, and Jen Rowe for their work on that great initiative to help on recruitment. I think Mike stepped in and actually got, you know, the floor for a little bit that night. Yes? So, it was a great event. That's what I have. We have one administrative position on the agenda tonight, so I'd like to move to that one. It's for the Wheatland Academy Principal Position to replace the retiring Sissy Toman. Hello, Sissy, out there. Thank you for being here. So, we are pleased to bring forward Latonya Harris for the position. Someone said she looks familiar. Well, yes, Latonya joined our district last year as one of our Assistant Directors for Student Services. Latonya's background includes experience as the Director of Alternative Programs for the Joliet Township High School District. Latonya is a former social worker who has moved into special education administrative ranks. I threw that in, Latonya, for Kathy. So, we're very excited to recommend Latonya Harris for your approval to the position of Principal of Wheatland Academy.
So, with that, I need a motion to approve that the Board of Education approve Latonya Harris as Principal for Wheatland Academy as presented.
I make a motion that the Board of Education approve Latonya Harris as Principal for Wheatland Academy as presented.
There's a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none. Jackie, call the roll, please.
I? Myself, I'm sorry.
I and go, social workers.
Just I, it's fine. Mr. Carubas?
Yes.
Mr. Rising?
Aye.
Mr. Rising?
Yes.
Ms. Donahue?
Aye.
Ms. Demming?
Aye.
Ms. Grover?
Yes.
Motion passes. Congratulations. And that is the end? Well, that was a-
That's the most exciting thing we've got going.
Very exciting.
That was very exciting.
Congratulations again. Welcome. Welcome in a new position. And with that, we move to the consent agenda items, and I need a motion that the Board of Education approve Consent Agenda Items E through I.
I move that the Board of Education approve Consent Agenda Items E through I as presented.
Second.
Motion second. Any discussion? Hearing none. Jackie, call the roll.
Mr. Carubas?
Yes.
Ms. Demming?
Aye.
Ms. Grover?
Yes.
Mr. Rising?
Aye.
Ms. Peel?
Aye.
Ms. Donahue?
Aye.
Mr. Resak?
Aye. Motion passes. Moving quickly today, we're going to move through our discussion items with the Board's approval. I'm going to switch the order since we have some visitors to discuss the energy auction process. Welcome.
Are these already on?
Yes.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Good evening, Board members. Dr. Sullivan, tonight I have some guests with us, John Nania and Becky Thompson from Nania Energy Consultants. They're going to talk to you about a different type of method for energy procurement, one we have not used in the past. It's an energy auction. In the past, we've just done sealed bids. We're not asking you for any action tonight. We just want to present this idea to you, allow you to answer questions, and then we'll talk about our next steps at the end. So, with that, I'll turn it over to John and Becky.
Great. Thank you, Todd. Good evening, all. Thank you for having us this evening. Todd, that was a brilliant introduction, so thank you. So, I'll start off. I think the easiest is to explain what a reverse auction actually is. You may be familiar with this in your bid, or your bond purchasing, but think of eBay in reverse. Rather than bidding up the price of an item that you'd like to win, we invite all energy suppliers to participate in an open and fair platform to bid down the price of your electricity and natural gas. So, this is different from a sealed bid process where you say, on this Tuesday at 10:00 AM, I would like a price to be sent to us in this format, where they no longer see what other suppliers are able to offer, and it's a one-and-done. We realized through that process that we're actually leaving quite a bit of money on the table. We had multiple, we've been in business about 20 years, and we're constantly receiving phone calls from our suppliers after the fact, after the bid had been awarded, where they were asking, well, why didn't you tell us where we needed to be? We could sharpen our pencil. And to us, that presented a problem because we were leaving money on the table for our clients. We were doing a disservice to the public, and so we created an auction platform that allowed for an open and fair process where all suppliers can participate within the same timeframe, within the same parameters, and be able to submit multiple bids. So, as you can see in the presentation that we've presented, this is a live competition. It starts out in about 15-minute increments and goes on until the bids stop. After the initial 15 minutes, any bids that are submitted within the last two minutes automatically extends the auction an additional two minutes.
Thank you, good.
Okay, thank you. So, this prevents anyone from waiting until the very last second, and when the seconds are ticking down, submitting a bid and eliminating that extra competition. So, we've built that in. So, the typical auction lasts about 20 to 25 minutes. You can see that it's a visible price to beat, so suppliers cannot see the other supplier names, but they can see the low bid that is currently winning the auction, so they are able to submit additional bids if they want to win the business. This is an extremely transparent process. Because it's a live platform, there's actually a live link that we can share with each of the members of the Board or of the administration. You can log in and watch it as it's happening, and it's all time and date stamped. So, if there's ever any FOIA request or any questions about how the process or the proceedings took place, you have everything as evidenced as a paper trail and as noted. As I mentioned before, this does lead to ultimate margin compression. We always run a sealed bid prior to running an auction so that we can quantify that all suppliers have the same data set that they're working from. It allows us to answer any questions prior to going to auction so that during the auction itself, we have an accurate set of numbers. And because we have those sealed bid numbers prior to running the auction, overwhelmingly after several thousand of these auctions, the competition that's created as a result lends itself to 8% to 10% additional savings beyond just the sealed process alone. So, again, creating that live, open environment drives down the price and gets you the ultimate best price that you can in a commodities market. So, I love to talk in percentages, but from a school district perspective, you're worried about your bottom line. So, what I've put together here are just some examples. We have not reviewed any of 204's actual bills or data set at this time, but just given estimates, we wanted to quantify what this could potentially look like for your school district if you were to move forward with this type of process. So, what you see here is just an estimation of what I would estimate your annual usage in natural gas would be. So, it's about 1.5 million thermes a year. So, say we run a sealed bid RFP, and you get a gas rate of about 30 cents per therm. There are costs to transact that business, whether you're going direct through a supplier or using a consultant such as ourselves, so you see what that supplier direct offer would be. Now, if we take that 10% savings that we talked about just a moment ago and put this into a sealed bid process, you can see where the difference in the sealed bid process versus the live or first auction process versus the sealed bid could lead in itself to almost $38,000 a year. Any questions to this point? Terrific. So, this is a very fancy-
Hold on, I think we do have one. Go ahead.
Yes, please.
Do, so, when we do a typical sealed bid, we submit a number of requirements, and sometimes when we get responses through the sealed bid process, we do have a low bidder that is not a responsible low bidder or fails to meet our qualifications. How does this process deal with that? I'm seeing a lot of dynamics and focus on the price, but we still want to make sure that I don't bid for the energy contract.
Right.
Because I can't do it.
So, we run the sealed bid ahead of time. So, we are still, as the consultants, running a very stringent RFP. We have a strict set of requirements that we will work with the district to make sure that we achieve, whether it's product type, term, prompt payment act, what type of billing you would like to secure. All of those different parameters are set out as part of the original RFP process. Then we do collect the sealed bid, which then does help us discern if there is a low bid that seems very, very funky and out of place. It allows us to rectify that situation and/or disqualify them from participating in the auction. There are no, suppliers are able to participate in the auction without prior submitting as part of the sealed bid. It is a prerequisite. So, any suppliers that are coming on auction day have already been pre-vetted and confirmed that they are meeting all of the requirements as of the RFP. Following the actual auction itself being completed, the top three suppliers, we then call and then doubly confirm that all of these parameters were met, everything was included, before we would ever present the results to the district.
I have a question.
Yes.
So, do you set a maximum price that they can come in with to begin the bidding?
Nope. So, in order to see any of the price to compare, what any of the other suppliers are submitting, they have to put some skin in the game, so they have to submit something. So, there's not a threshold from a maximum perspective, because what we see quite often is within the first few minutes, they may just set a really high initial price, just so they can see where they need to be, then they have their number crunchers getting where they need, what they need to do, and then they submit additional bids beyond that. When we run the sealed bid, that allows us to take a fair market analysis of where the market is, and that's how we will set a threshold or a price to compare. That's actually what we'll come to the Board with before even running an auction and say, this is where the fair market is today. We would like to ask for approval to run an auction on this day, and we are asking for preapproval to execute on the day of the auction, if and only if the prices are at or below these threshold prices from the fair market analysis.
Have you worked with any school districts already?
Yes, absolutely, yes. So, I think Todd actually knows about me or about our organization, because we've completed this successfully for both West and East Aurora. West Aurora was actually featured in the Chicago Tribune because using this process for their electricity last summer garnered them almost $600,000 in savings. So, it's quite a substantial amount of savings they were able to add to their operating budget as a result of this process.
In one year?
It was over the term, over a four-year term. So, it's $150,000 annually savings. And we actually, I've included a case study as part of these slides, so we'll discuss that here in just a few moments. Any other questions at this time? Terrific. Okay. So, this is a very fancy graph that I just include to show you where we're at for timing of the marketplace. So, right now, your contracts are expiring on July 1st of this year. Why that's important information is that there's really not a better time to be having a discussion about energy. What you're looking at here are the natural gas future prices. So, energy is purchased on the futures market, much like many other commodities. So, what we do is we track where the prices are coming in for the different specific terms to discern where the market is coming, and as part of the consulting that we provide, opportunistic timeframes for you to go to market to run an auction. The process is ironclad and very successful, but it's also important to pay attention to the market and when we should have these conversations. So, I just included this to illustrate that we are actually in the, some of the lowest natural gas prices of the last 20 years. So, it's incredible timing to be having this discussion and what I would hope to, you know, exponentially increase the amount of savings available to your district.
Becky, can I just ask you a quick question here?
Please.
So, I noticed on Slide 1 and the slide, or I suppose it was 2, and Slide 4 here, on Slide 1, it appeared that the rate for three-year was the lowest, but on this one, it looks like the one-year rate was the lowest. Am I reading that wrong?
So, you mean on this slide?
On this slide, it looks like the three-year rate is the lowest, the 36 months, right?
Right.
But then if you fast-forward two slides, it looks like the one-year rate is the lowest.
Yeah. So, the image on the first is not a specific auction, it's just to highlight what the actual auction looks like. We'll go into a real-life example here in just a moment, showing where that stands. So, that's an important point to bring up, and thank you for bringing it to our attention. So, when we run an auction, we actually run multiple terms simultaneous to one another. So, depending on the day or where the market stands, the one-year may be more favorable or the three-year. We will make our recommendation following the auction after we see where all of the terms come and what we feel is in the best interest of the district, not just from the low-cost perspective, to your point earlier, but also to, if we're at the bottom of a 20-year low, maybe a longer term is more in your favor to take advantage of a longer term, given that we haven't been here in two decades. So, those are all part of the discussions that we'll have during the actual auction or even after the sealed bid. Once we have that initial analysis, that gives us an idea of where the market's falling for your specific accounts.
Thanks.
So, the next slide, this wouldn't, this is just, again, to illustrate what this could mean at this point. We're just talking about natural gas for the district, but I did want to highlight that this particular process, much like with West Aurora, how they were able to secure about $150,000 in savings, based off of the electricity that is what we call deregulated, meaning that it's on ComEd and not on Naperville Power. So, you're able to purchase through a third party. Again, estimations utilizing the auction process itself, not taking into consideration any market conditions, could potentially lead to over $80,000 a year in savings. Same thing with the graph for the electric as well. And to your point, Mr. Rising, here on the electric, you'll actually see that the one-year term is actually less favorable than the three- and four-year terms. So, they're a little bit inverse in that regard, again, which would be discerned through our sealed bid process and the auction itself. And then finally, I could talk to you all day about what we can do, but I would rather show you what we did do. So, this is the actual case study for West Aurora. We completed the natural gas auction for them in December of 2019. We had six suppliers that submitted 105 bids within a 36-minute auction, and the accepted offer will yield savings of $27,000 over the term. For them, it was actually more important, given some of the initiatives that they had. They had a very complex product. We would expect to see anywhere from 10 to 12 different suppliers participate, but given, again, the sealed bid and running the RFP and qualifying the suppliers, we had six suppliers that could meet the RFP parameters that we had set. So, it was a very successful auction, and maybe a little hard to see that, but this is basically what the auction platform would look like when you were to log in. So, you actually see each dot that's represented on this graph is an additional bid from a supplier. So, over the 36 minutes, that's where we see where 105 different unique bids were submitted. It highlights the low bid from each supplier here in the bottom corner, what the low bid was for each supplier, so each time that they submitted additional bid, this would be updated. Again, we ran one, two, three, and four-year terms simultaneous to one another, so that's what each of the colors represents. And then finally, what the best bid is per term. In this specific instance, the same supplier was the same for, was the low bid in all terms, but that's not always the case. So, this is where, again, this, these links stay live for a year following the auction. So, if you ever had any questions or wanted to reference it, you could always point back and pull up the page to reference. So, this is something, what we would present following the auction if it was successful. Again, it's not obligatory to sign on the day of the auction. The way the process utilizes the margin compression, however, it's different from the sealed bid process where you may collect bids and a supplier holds it for a week or so while you do contract negotiations. They're compressing and taking out any additional cushion or premium they have for that kind of timeliness. So, the expectation with an auction, if you do choose to go to auction, is that if you would like to accept the auction rate, that you are signing the contract to execute on auction day. So, it's a- the sealed bid process where you may collect bids and the supplier holds it for a week or so while you do contract negotiations. They're compressing and taking out any additional cushion or premium they have for that kind of timeliness. So the expectation with an auction, if you do choose to go to auction, is that if you would like to accept the auction rate, that you are signing the contract to execute on auction day. So it's a little bit flip-flop from the process you're used to now, where you collect the bids, look over the bids, approve the bids, maybe refresh them and then sign. It's a lot of more work on the front end, where we're doing a preapproval process, we're pre-vetting the suppliers, we're getting the pricing ahead of time, and then we're running the auction live. So then following, if the auction was successful, this is what we would present to the board following to show you what the results were, snapshots of what the auction looked like if you weren't able to log in, and where this stands versus your current rate, so you have a better idea of how you can plan going forward.
Do you charge a fixed rate for running this for us, or how does that work?
Yeah, absolutely. Terrific question. Thank you for bringing that up. So as consultants, we are paid as part of your fixed rate, which is probably similar to how you're paying your current consultant. So as part of this 28 cents per term, or whatever it may be, a portion then goes to NNEA. So if we go back to- Yes. So here, you're, you're likely paying some sort of supplier margin or transaction cost currently. In the same way, this is part of the RFP that would go out. So our actual fee, our consulting fee, would be part of the RFP. So it would be included in the final rates that are included in the auction. So the final rate that you would sign for the contract would be inclusive of the NNEA fees, and we're happy to disclose those. We're completely transparent in our process. It's always a fair fee, but it does, it, we're paid directly by the winning supplier. We are not ever invoicing the district, and there's no money exchanged between the district or NNEA.
This was our seminar arrangement on, from our last consultant also.
Well, personally, my job before I retired at Alcatel, was running a billion-dollar purchasing program, and I was trying to drive 75% of our purchases to e-auction, because I did see tremendous savings when we employed these tools. So I not only would like to see this, but also I'd like to see more e-auctions done in the district if possible. I tried to ask that when I very first came on the board, and, you know, it's something I need to bring up again, that I think it is an important process and way of dealing with suppliers.
Absolutely, especially in something, in a case like this where it's a commodity. No one's electricity is better than another person's electricity. It really boils down to credibility of the supplier and favorability of the contract terms, which we handle that-
And that is critical, the, Justin's question about vetting the suppliers. You have to make sure that everyone that's participating in that auction is completely qualified, and you will be willing to take them as the supplier for whatever you're buying.
We have a 98% close rate with our auctions, so the suppliers that participate know that we're very serious and that we're not going to auction just for price discovery, that if we're going to auction, it is because it's a legitimate process. So because of that, we find that the quality of the suppliers that we attract will district of your size. Okay? So I think just the last couple of slides we have, this is just the electric case study for West Aurora. Again, we invite all licensed suppliers in the state to participate. Again, everyone has the fair and equal opportunity to participate within the auction, again, providing that fair and open platform with full transparency. For their electricity auction, 11 suppliers submitted almost 160 bids within a 20-minute auction, and it yielded $150,000 annual savings of, and it was a term of four years that they ultimately decided to accept.
Do we have any other questions or comments?
Is that the last slide?
I believe, yes. The, the final analysis.
I still have a couple, actually.
Sure.
So I'm assuming, this is obviously based, since we're talking gas, or this is based on terms per year, right?
Correct.
So it doesn't necessarily mean the size of the district, it means how much gas you use, essentially, correct?
Correct.
Okay. So here's my question, because I have to ask this, because my life is in sales. I'm assuming we will probably, most likely, hopefully yield a better service rate from your company, since we have twice as many buildings, correct? Is that a fair assumption to make?
Yes, so because we're paid based on usage, our fee is based on usage. So we would not-
Usage, lower rate.
Correct.
Okay.
Correct.
And then the last question is, do you guys, more oftentimes than not, have all the major players, whether it's gas or electric, that you're involved with? Because I could see some, you know, vendors having a real high opinion of themselves and say, oh, we don't need your company, you know, we could go on and get it on our own. Do they all come to play?
Right. Yeah, absolutely, absolutely. So if you're talking about the constellations, mid-americans, center points of the world, they're all participating in our auctions. So some of the most legitimate and oldest gas suppliers in the state all participate in our auction.
Okay, great. Thanks.
There's some time, and you mentioned this, I think sprinkled throughout. I'd like to highlight a couple of the points for me. Sometimes bidding markets go awry. I'm thinking, vaguely remembering the California electric market at one point. What are some of the safeguards to make sure that, you know, there's not collusion, or there's not an unnatural spike in the price, so that it is bid down and not artificially inflated? So I think one of the points you mentioned was getting preapproval from the board on the parameters. Could you talk about that further, or any other safeguards to make sure that, you know, the, the market is a true free market and not something that is manipulated to, to the disadvantage of the district?
Yeah, absolutely. That's a terrific question. So the beautiful thing about natural gas is that it's very easy to discern where the market is. We're able to watch the NYMEX, which is the natural gas commodity portion, it's the larger portion of your fixed cost on the open market. So if we're getting bids for 34 cents in our sealed bid, and we know that the market is at 22 cents, we can pretty easily discern any collusion that would be happening immediately. So while we trust our suppliers and have very valuable trusting relationships with them, we're also experts in the field of 20 years, and so we're doing our due diligence on the backend as well. We work for you, so we're sitting on your side of the table, not for, on the supplier's side of the table. We know where your pricing has been. From my understanding, you have the basis portion locked and not the NYMEX portion. So when we do our analysis, we're going to actually be reviewing where you've been in the last 12 months versus where our fair market pricing is coming in, versus where we see the actual-
Time's up.
So yeah, so we'll be able to discern that. I would, I understand the reasoning for the question, but based off of the supplier pool that we have, collusion's never been an issue in the thousands of auctions that we have run, so you can have safety and trust in that. But we do have safeguards in place to, to prevent that from happening.
Go ahead.
My question is, just how do we ensure, kind of touching a little bit on, on Justin's question, but how do we ensure that the suppliers, as they would supply it, that there are, whatever the processes that they use to supply it, the tools, the, how do we ensure that there's nothing that can corrupt the, you know, the gas and things that we, that they would be providing? How do we ensure, what, what protection do we have in those cases?
You were leaning forward. Would you like to take this? Go for it, absolutely.
The, you know, the, the supplier pool is, is, it's not a very large one for natural gases compared to electricity. But think about this more as a financial transaction than a physical transaction. I think your point is, are there, are there perhaps issues about reliability that at some point we might have to concern ourselves with? No. There's the utility company, Nycor, has put in place safeguards to protect commercial and residential customers who are buying from third-party suppliers to ensure that physical delivery is not an issue. Yeah, so, and, and there hasn't been one for many years. I mean, the last time there was any issue around physical delivery was during the vortex of 13, 14, and actually, we were only worried that they were going to curtail some gas deliveries to some customers. But the last ones they would curtail to are homeowners and schools, so.
Other questions? Todd, you're looking for consensus whether to proceed?
Well, we, we wanted to give you an opportunity to hear this new, different type of procurement method. We do need to move, if we're going to go in this direction, start getting work done as far as giving, giving them our loads and information so they can analyze it and then go through the sealed bid process to get our threshold, and then get ready to go out for auction. So, you know, we want to hear if you have any concerns within the next two weeks, and if not, we'll, we'll proceed along this path.
Sounds good.
Any others? Great. Thank you so much. It was really informative, thank you.
Thank you very much. We appreciate the time.
Could I, could I have 30 seconds?
Sure.
I'm a Naperville, I'm a Naperville resident for 32 years. I'm the consultant to Wheatland Township and Naperville Township for their electric aggregation programs. I've sat on the Naperville Utility Public Board for five years. My terms just ended, and I just want to, my kids are both products of 204, so I want to say thank you and know that I have a vested interest in making sure this goes very well. You, you know all the right things to say.
Thank you very much for your time.
And our next discussion item is our career explorations and pathways update. Again, welcome.
Thank you.
Thank you for coming.
Welcome, as they start to transition the next PowerPoint over. Want to, thank you allowing for us to come here tonight. My name is Brian Jovaney, the Director of Innovation.
And I'm Molly Larson, Instructional Technology Specialist.
And we are going to talk a little bit about some updates, some work that we've been doing, specifically World of Work and computational thinking, which align to the Board of Education Policy 610, to make sure that we're preparing our students for the future of work, and what does that look like, and making sure we have the competencies that they're successful in whatever career they choose. The first one that we're going to be talking about is World of Work, and we kind of gave you an update last spring about what that, that offering is. And so that is just an opportunity for our really highlighting that our education pathways for elementary school students and giving them an exposure to the world of work and building some self-awareness for who they are. And then for our computational thinking, starting to look at the skills and competencies that our students are going to need in the future, and our work with Digital Promise and our grant that we are working with that organization. So we'll kind of catch up here a little bit. So the first one we're going to highlight is World of Work and some career pathways and opportunities for all of our students in our K-12 landscape, really talking about that whole spectrum of experiences for our students, and highlighting the K-5 and some things that we're doing at the middle school and high school level as well. So if you recall, last year, we embarked on a journey with World of Work about 18 months ago, and we brought in Al Hidalgo, who started this opportunity at Qualcomm, and giving students an opportunity to learn about themselves and the career that awaits them in the future. And over that 18 months, we've done a number of different things to expose our students to the world of work and career pathways, and, and one of them being teacher collaboration, bringing them in, having to talk about what it looks like in classroom, professional learning for new teachers to expose them to career pathways, and then also starting to look at some career connections and what, curriculum connections, what that looks like for teachers.
I want you to pause for a second.
Yeah, sounds good, thank you.
They're having technical difficulties. Let's just switch them out. I want to make sure everybody online can hear you.
Thank you. All right, we'll start over there a little bit. So something we've been doing over the past 18 months have really been exposing more teachers to the world of work at the K-5 level and giving them some opportunities to start to collaborate and start to see what this looks like in instructional design in their classroom, to support their students so they can build some self-awareness. And we'll highlight what that looks like here in a second, but we just wanted to kind of bring to light some of the things that we've been doing. Some of the things, we bring in new teachers onboard, giving them an opportunity to learn from our lead teachers, and kind of what is that, what have they been doing in their classroom? Some RIOSEC parties, and I'll highlight what RIOSEC means here in a little bit. And our last one is having teachers start to make some strong curricular connections in their classrooms, so they're highlighting it in their daily practice, and it's not just another thing. So our goal is to really start to bridge that gap between education, the world of work. So it's not education and then work, we're starting to blend those together. So at the K-5 level, we're giving them experience and exposure to careers, opportunities that are out there, and then as we move that pathway forward, what does that look at high school? Giving them work experiences, internships, so that they can start that journey now and start to build some pathways for experiences as they move forward. So as we highlight a little bit about the world of work, which Al Hidalgo started, and we've been partnering with Alcoa Valley to start this process, I'm going to talk about two key components of that world of work tonight, just as a reminder and refresher to what we've been doing. The first one being self-awareness, where students have an opportunity to self-identify their strengths, interests, and values, and really build some self-awareness of who they are and what they value, and how important that is. The second part is not only the academic journey, but a career journey, and giving students some experience, exposure, practice with potential careers that they may or may not encounter down the road, but connecting that to their self-awareness, so they can build some connections. As you can see, one of the most important things that we found in that self-awareness journey is the connection to our SCL work, as two of the competencies directly highlight, one being their self-awareness, where students build a strong understanding of who they are, of their strengths, interests, and values. Then also, one of the things that we've also started to see is that really strong social awareness, that I have different strengths than my neighbor, than my other classmate, I have, I value different things, I'm interested in different things, and really starting to build that connection in our classrooms and what that looks like. We've been making a number of different tours to some elementary schools over the past couple of days and weeks, highlighting robotics as we compare, prepare for that last elementary school competition. You can really see them kind of highlighting in their teamwork, the different strengths that they bring to the team, and how that impacts their teamwork, and somebody who has this strength or this interest, and how that relates to their team. And they're kind of funny, because they're pretty honest about how they work as a team, but it really shows in terms of their RIOSEC codes. So I've hit on RIOSEC codes a couple of times, that, wanted to highlight the terms and what they mean. The backbone of this is interest. What do you want, interested in? And so we talk about RIOSEC themes to highlight that. If somebody leads with an R, realistic, that means they're a doer, they like to build, they like to be hands-on, they like to be outside. Investigative, they're curious, they're a thinker, they like to ask why. Artistic is not only art, but a creator, a big idea thinker. That's one of the things that our teachers talk a lot about, is disposing the idea of artistic is only art, art class, but it's really just a creator, creative, unique ideas. Molly over here leads with artistic, she's very, a good thinker and outside the box on what's going on. Social is our helpers, having that strong empathy piece to what they do. Enterprising, our persuaders, our leaders, like to debate, like to be persuaded others on ideas. And our last one is conventional organizers. I would be lying if I didn't have, if I didn't tell you I had a little conventional in myself. I do enjoy conventional as we go through RIOSEC parties, because if you give them an activity where they, where they get to organize things, I will tell you, their lights, their faces light up, and I go, I'm not sure if I would love to do that, but they get really excited about it. So it's, it's, it just highlights how we have different strengths and interests and who we are.
So we'd like to highlight some examples of World of Work in action across our 204 community. So thank you to Tara Nordstrom, Becky Allen, and Dr. Sullivan for sharing some photos. This first one comes from Tara's second-grade classroom. As an introductory lesson into those RIOSEC themes, students were asked to identify characteristics and interests within each framework. For example, they identified an interest in science, books, and computers under the investigative tab, all within looking at their self-awareness of where they fall within the world of work. Then from there, students identified their top five strengths within each theme in order to develop what they called a MITRI.
And if you recall, if you recall last year- If you recall, if you recall last year, Reynolds, Reynolds Cross from McCarty brought in some examples of MITRI's to highlight the students building those MITRI's and their strengths, interests, and values. And one of the best parts about MITRI, it also allows them to kind of explain their goals, what are they hoping for, but at the same time, their fears, and our teachers have done a really nice job of showcasing that to not only the other classmates, but their parents, and it drives, brings a really good conversation home, and some of the things that they're passionate about, but also what are some things that are potentially getting in the way of those goals as they move forward. As, as we continue on that journey, one of the things that we've started to do now is expose more teachers, not only at the K-5 level, but the K-8 and K-12 level, to RIOSEC parties, to getting them to talk about their actual interests and how that connects to their classroom, and how they can get to know students better because- and how they can get to know students better because of that. And this is just one example of teachers interacting with the RIOSEC party and getting them talking about that great experience. So, as we talk about World of Work journey, what does that look like as we start to make some career connections? So, we've talked about the self-awareness and giving students an opportunity to build their strengths, interests and values. Now, we start to give them some exposure to what are some career opportunities and giving them hope and valuing all careers. So, we have a grid of 54 careers, which I'll show here in a second, but in each career, they get an opportunity to learn about it, get exposed to it, practice it with it, with an activity connected to it, and then meet a pro, whether that's online through Nepris or bringing in a pro to their classroom for allowing students to ask some questions. On Twitter, you'll see a number of awesome examples. A number.
Use them all.
We're just gonna.
Is this one better?
I feel like, there we go. I feel like I'm a financial analyst right now, I got three screens up or maybe just like a, at the end of a sports game, I'm just, you know, whatever it is, I just feel, I feel positive right now.
Is that a new career?
It's not, well, financial analyst is on here, let's see what else we, there's, we don't have athlete on there. But the whole idea of it is, as we bring professionals in there, it's allowing students to see, our career opportunities are out there, maybe someone like them or someone who maybe that's not a relative of them or their dad or their mom, but other careers that are available to them and connecting that to what they do. And our teachers have done an awesome job of making connections with their classroom, with their, with their community, but at the same time leveraging online tools like Nepris to bring in professionals from across the country to all our students to ask questions.
Okay, so can you just explain Nepris a little bit more?
Oh, yeah, absolutely.
You said it twice.
Yeah. So, Nepris is an online platform, which is that we're partnered with and what they do is they're basically a third party to connect our teachers with professionals across the country. So, how Nepris works is our teachers go in and say, I'd like to meet blank, a financial analyst, and then Nepris goes and finds that financial analyst. A teacher can put in all kinds of criteria to help identify somebody who they might want to come and talk to their students. They want a female financial analyst or they want a female engineer. They can put those criteria in so that then Nepris will go find that professional, they'll schedule a Zoom meeting with the classroom and the classroom can interact with the professional for a 20 to 30 minute period. So, the professional gives a little overview of what they do. Also, one of the powers behind it is they can showcase the work environment to them. So, as we talk about the future of work and what does that look like, they can really show them hands-on right now what that looks like. And as we talk about dealer inspire handle, but the changing environment, so they can showcase that right then and there and then students can ask some questions. And you'll be amazed at the questions that a fifth grader will ask a professional. Some of them are like, oh, that's an amazing question. Some of them are like, just getting to know that profession and the basics of what that would entail, work environment, what do they value, the pathway to there. And I think that it's one of the values, the pathway to careers varies so much and that's the power of allowing those professionals to share their story. You can see here, this is the 54 careers. Those 54 careers were taken, that's from K-8, were taken from the ONET. That does not include every single career you can imagine, but it really just starts to get kids talking and it connects to the RIOSEC codes and the RIOSEC themes so that students can start talking about, I liked that, I didn't like that. So, they start to make some connections to it all and it's connecting back to who they are and their strengths and their interests and their values. Some people want to, they value working outside, they value working with people. So, those are all conversations that a teacher's able to have in the classroom with students.
Brian, do you want to take questions as you go or do you want to wait till the end?
We can take them as we.
I have one.
Yeah.
So, to me, and I'll explain it a little bit more later, but this is a clear, this is starting to begin to be a paradigm shift for career. And I'll talk more about that later, but I've tried to keep up with the research with this. So, we've just started this. So, and we might not be at the point yet. One of the criticisms, which I don't think is a criticism, but I just want to put it out there, is when you talk about this, there are some critics who say you pigeonhole people into a specific way of thinking or a career. Now, we're only at the onset of this. How do we guarantee that when in second grade, when you want to be a fireman, all of a sudden in fifth grade, you go, geez, that's not what I want to be? And how do I get myself out of, of thinking that I'm just that type of kid or person or that's the job that I should do?
I think kind of the, your, the program, the instructional design actually kind of helps with that to giving kids exposure to all different opportunities and careers so that we know, the research shows that your interests might change over time, your strengths might change over time and we value that and that's okay. But what we're trying to do is expose you to all the number of different opportunities that are available to you throughout your lifespan and they might change from kindergarten to fifth grade, but we want to expose you to all the different ones that you have because some of the things that we find is sometimes the only exposure that you get is what your mom, dad, neighbor, uncle, aunt get. This gives you at least 54, if not more to that. So, I think that's kind of the exposure to it, that we want kids talking about it and that we want to value all careers and we want to give all kids hope.
Great, thank you.
So, the last part that we want to highlight, this is just Tara exposing some of her second graders to careers and there's, what they're doing right there is career cards. So, not only are they highlighting those six at second grade, but there's a number of different other careers that they're highlighting and getting kids to just talk about and their strengths and how do they, how do their interests connect to that? It's getting, having kids have a conversation about it. This is just as we start to talk about the K-12 pathway and what that looks like and the experiences. This is an example of our high school experiences. This is an example of an internship opportunity that our students may have at the high school level in a partnership with Dealer Inspire and Kids Matter. A huge thank you to them for allowing 30 of our 204 students to go over there a couple of weeks ago to tour their facility and to see who they are and what they're about. We're going to have about 15 additional students go back on March 13th to learn a little bit more about Dealer Inspire and what they do. And then they'll be, handful of them will be interviewing for internships over the summer. Where 10 204 and two, roughly 10 204 and 203 students will engage in internship over the summer at Dealer Inspire, so we're excited about that. So, as we talk about World of Work and career pathways, where are we going? More exposure to K-5 students of the world of work and starting to start, talk about, make that connection at the middle school level as students start to better understand who they are in our SCL work and their strengths, interests and values, connecting that to the middle school level so that they can start to provide opportunities and experiences to what that looks like at the high school level and some experiences. The second one is continuing to do some RIOSEC parties and our teachers are doing a nice job of making some curricular connections to that as well. They're doing RIOSEC math parties and RIOSEC ELLA parties and starting to make some connections. For example, they're reading, they're reading a book and one of the characters in the book, what are their interests, what are their strengths and bringing that to the students' attentions as well. And then some other things that we're continuing to do, we're continuing to look at the classes that we offer our middle school and high school students to make sure that they're relevant and preparing our students for the future. Last year, business brought you a handful of courses that are new opportunities. Technology engineering is current reviewing theirs, so I expect the same thing in the spring or next fall about them too, just to, are the courses that we're offering aligned to the future of work for our students and making sure those skills align to that. So, as we transition and to start talking about computational thinking, we couldn't connect it better to the world of work because it's one of the skills that we think, the competencies that we think students are going to need in the future, whether it be five, 10, 15 years as we prepare for an unknown workforce and making sure that we're preparing them for the skills that they need in that digital landscape. So, as you remember, we are working with Digital Promise to start to explain what this is in a three-year grant with two other school districts, County of Talladega and Iowa City Schools. And last year, we really kind of did a backdrop of the why, the what, making sure this is really important for our kids and what does that look like and building that pathway. This year, we've been working with a pilot group of educators to start to provide some professional learning and to make some curricular connections and they continue to provide professional learning for additional staff. We're in the middle of an IPSD Academy for some teachers and exposing more and more to what computational thinking is and why it's important. This is a slide that we showed last year about computational thinking, why it's important, not only computing jobs, but one of the things that's really highlighting computational thinking is making sure that students are lifelong learners and can engage with complex problems. If we think about the world today, there's not many things where big data is not involved in what we're talking about. So, those are some of the competencies that Molly will highlight later. One of the things that we continue to talk to teachers about is just the connections to computational thinking and all that we do and our standards and one of them being that portrait of a graduate and computational thinking, providing a skill and pathway for really two of those competencies, creativity, innovation, critical thinking and problem solving. And Molly, as she highlights those definitions, you'll kind of see how those connect to those.
So, this visual is something that we use with our teachers to help illustrate computational thinking as a problem-solving process, to illustrate the intersections between coding and computer science, which is something our teachers are currently implementing within their classroom and having their students kind of grapple with. However, it also distinguishes it to making it that bigger umbrella category and showing that computer science and coding are part of computational thinking, but that we really want students to walk away being able to analyze problems, break them down into simpler, more meaningful applications. So, as we work to, as a district, to inspire all of our students to achieve their greatest potential, our committee works to help all of their learners become computational thinkers who can harness that power of computing to innovate and solve problems because as Brian mentioned, World of Work, whatever they go on to do in their future is evolving and changing at a rapid pace. And so, being able to apply universal skills in whatever situations they faced is important and something that's valuable. So, we're trying to implement that through the work of our computational thinking pilot group. So, along with Digital Promise and that pilot group of educators, we've identified six pillars or skills that students who are computational thinkers should represent. The first being decomposition, which is the ability to break down a complex problem into smaller, more manageable pieces. An example for this with students is having them look at machine learning, things like bicycles or clocks or robotics and understanding what that goal is at a large scale, but then breaking it down into simple pieces. How does this one function work? So, for example, on a bike, how do the gears, the tires all add in order to make that bike functional? The second one is pattern recognition, so looking for similarities among and within problems, something that students are already familiar with as they look for connections amongst the texts that they read or the science labs that they do, but now looking to be able to apply it in a problem-solving setting. The third one is abstraction, removing details from a solution so that it work, it can work from many problems. So, as they're faced with a challenge or a situation, can they see the patterns, see that maybe this was something that they've faced before and be able to apply a similar And then the last three are algorithms, developing a step-by-step solution to a problem or rules to follow to solve a problem. One of the ways that we highlight this pillar is with the upper, middle and high school levels, looking at the algorithms behind the social media platforms that they use. How do those programs analyze the data as they go into things like Twitter and Instagram? What are they seeing on their stream? Why are they seeing it? And get them to start asking questions regarding that platform. Next.
And as we highlight algorithms, we had a great example today as we were watching one of the robotics teams share their story. They were building a strategy for their competition on how they were going to score points and first we're going to get this cube, then we're going to get this cube, then we're going to get this cube and this team's going to do that. I wanted to throw an if at them, but I didn't because I wanted to throw an if statement, but, but you can see the algorithms are kind of everywhere that they're engaging with and it's just that step-by-step direction.
And then the next pillar is working with data, so collecting, representing and analyzing data. A lot of our teachers are already analyzing and implementing this within their classrooms, but how to look beyond just the typical bar graphs, line charts, but how can they represent different types of data in unique and creative ways, right? As Brian mentioned before, one of the pillars of World of Work is that creator in our RIOSEC and so, being able to visually represent data in unique ways is something that's important no matter what field the students choose to pursue.
And we're also trying to get students to use some automated tools to collect data in addition to that, in addition to just the traditional survey, starting to use some technology to kind of automate that data as you would see with, when working with big data.
Yeah, a great example of that is in science labs with the vernier technology and the probes, of being able to gather scientific data, analyze it and then report out to their peers. And then the last pillar is creating computational artifacts, using creative expression and exploration of ideas to create prototypes. Two different examples that we see this at the levels with elementary and middle, students are participating in a lot of Shark Tank activities where they're developing prototypes to solve a problem, a real-world challenge. They then present and share their ideas with their classmates or a panel of judges. They gather feedback, they go back, they re-tinker, create new iterations of the product in order to make it more meaningful and better. And then they again, go back and pitch that product to a panel of judges in order to see if their product would fit the criteria that's met, similar to what would happen in the workforce. They might be presented with a challenge at work, have to develop a plan and then put it into action. And similar at the high school level, the business classes participate in a VEI competition where they have to develop a company, they have to build a product. And just earlier this, or last week, we got to see some of those put into action and see students' products and how they went about pitching it and again, revisiting that prototype to make it better, to fit their consumer needs or their target audience. Yeah. So, similar to the world of work, we have a couple of examples of what this looks like being implemented across 204. So, thank you to Megan Tilletson and Beth Nuth at Niqua for sharing this. Here, we have an example of that creating computational artifacts. Megan had her students work collaboratively in think tank teams to design prototypes and inventions that they then shared with their peers, gathered some feedback and as you can see, both tech savvy with the computers as well as drawing out the prototypes on the right. The students had to redesign based on the feedback, they came up with new iterations, new products and then ultimately pitched their ideas to a Shark Tank panel. This is an example of finding those connections amongst computational thinking, world of work. Beth had Joe Inslee from the community at Argonne come in to talk about supercomputers in relation to Hour of Code. So, again, being able to bridge that gap with our community and seeing where the computational thinking can be applied in action in a career. And then for professional learning, this is an example that we did amongst the staff to illustrate that data visualization and representation. Teachers were asked to go around and analyze the doors here at the CEC, what type of doors, how many doors, and then they shared out their unique visual representations after analyzing the data.
So, as we talk about next steps for computational thinking, it'll be continued professional learning, exposing more students and kind of highlighting that work with our students and having that shared vision and common language. Another big step that we're doing with our grant and Digital Promise and the two other core districts is continuing to support new districts across the country, are bringing computational thinking into their practices across the country. Right now, we're supporting Digital Promise as they build a toolkit for other schools to kind of implement as they start to understand their why and their what as they start on this journey as well. And obviously, continuing to collaborate with industry to make sure that what we're doing aligns to the skills that our students need in the future. As we close up, we want to say thank you and also a kind reminder about the Indian Prairie Podcasts, there are two on World of Work that are available and one on computational thinking, so we encourage everyone to check those out as well. So, thank you.
Questions, comments?
Just had a quick comment. Thank you so much, this continuation. I had mentioned earlier to our superintendent that this is, we're so along the lines of what's happening across the country and states and workforce centers with career pathways and community colleges. So, this really is helping to prepare the... So this really is helping to prepare the thought process for our students as they go forward, and we're going to see it just, I mean, you know, but you'll, we're just going to see this everywhere. And so our students are really on the cusp of beginning to be able to take advantage of the whole thought process. So I really appreciate what you guys are doing here. I think it's great for our students.
Mark?
Yeah, I'd just echo that too. I mean, first of all, this is wonderful, and I'm so encouraged that our teachers and our staff are embracing this. And to me, this is really all about that exploration and exposure, more than anything else. But, you know, I will default back onto some what Mike said a little bit too, is that I know myself as a student, and watching my two kids as well, they weren't the same student they were when they were in elementary as they were in high school. And, you know, Brian, you'll appreciate this, you know, had my daughter not taken an intro to engineering class in high school, she wouldn't be majoring in engineering right now. So it's encouraging that they're getting that exposure, and, but I also caution not to, again, pigeonhole them or lock them into one of those specific areas because they might find something that's passionate about that doesn't align with the investigative, or the realistic, or the social, or the enterprising, you know? So I just, that's my only concern.
Yeah. No, we're trying to expose all kinds of careers, and we encourage exposure and continue to do that. On the other side, we do have some students who are really, really passionate about that on this, when I get into 11th, 12th grade. So we want to also provide that experience as well, so they have that, oh, I'm one step towards my career as well. So we want to balance that, and making sure that we give exposure to all students, and at the same time, giving kids some pathways to future careers and some credentials along the way.
And I would just like to add that interest, as Brian mentioned with world of work, getting them at the young age to think about their interests and passions, and where that can weave into their job, I think is important. I graduated from 204, and when I was younger, I knew I wanted to do something with students and with the youth. I originally thought I wanted to be a pediatrician, and so kind of felt that idea of being pigeonholed. However, thank you to the Wabonzi and their preschool program. I was able to see what that life of a teacher would be like, and getting that experience and that exposure, but knowing early on that some of my passions and interests aligned in both those fields, I think is something that's important, and something I might not have been exposed to had I not gone through that.
Justin?
Two points. I think, I think our Grow Your Own program seems to be working.
Just a little bit.
Yeah. And do you guys ever sit back and say, all right, I used to be a student, what kind of cool stuff can I bring to the current students? Because that's what I'm kind of, I'm getting some energy there, where, you know, you guys have that on-the-ground experience, and there's a whole plate of stuff to try to deliver to them. And you can say, wow, this is something I would have liked to have at NIWA or Wabonzi. So I can, it's not a question, it's just I'm feeling that energy, that's nice.
I think about after every world of work experience, the comment is, I wish I had that when I was a kid. I'm going to go home and do it with my kid, whether that's a five-year-old or a 35-year-old, we get the exact same thing. So I think that's, and I will tell you, I have a six- and three-year-old, I am a better dad because of this endeavor and just giving them exposure.
So let's talk.
One more point, before you go into your speech. I think the board should direct the superintendent to do a RIASEC evaluation of all the board members. So we can get a nice grid and figure out who's the doer and the thinker. What do you think about that?
I've already given it to Dr. Tally.
We already know your convention.
So that we can figure out what we want to do when we grow up? Is that right? Can I just?
Yes, go ahead.
To me, this whole thing is, it's about inspiring, and that's our mission. And that, yeah, this is so cool, because we're going to inspire kids. So thank you.
Is the world of work both for elementary and middle school students?
So right now, we really highlight it at the K-5 level. We're starting to talk about what does that look at the middle school level, and starting to, we just did a RIASEC party with some middle school educators in January, but just starting to think about what does that look like, especially as students will start to come up with that vocabulary and that understanding, being some more intentional about it. We've done, we've already done some nice things at the middle school level, just about career exploration and careers with some of our electives and others. At eighth grade, they do a nice, like, they explore a career, but being more intentional about it and talking more about it.
The other thing, I was on the NetPress website, and it talked about how if you wanted to be on it as a volunteer, community members, you could, if you have a job that you want to discuss, you can go on it. So I don't know, I just want to point that out to anybody in our community, if they would like to be on it, you know, that would be great, because I know parents are out there and stuff, so.
Excellent.
So I'm like excited beyond belief, I'm jumping on my skin. Because every once in a while, education is so slow to change, so slow. But I want to, like, this, last year's presentation, this year's presentation, Portrait of a Graduate. Sometimes we do these things, and we don't think it's tied to get together, that it's episodic, and there's not a well-thought plan. And I think this district is like at the forefront of American education. If you look at educational journals, lo and behold, three weeks ago, Education Week, guess what the title is? The World of Work. Go figure. And I want to make sure that people understand that this is a paradigm shift. And this is a comment for the, myself, for the board, for administrators, for teachers, and for parents. On page one, they start out with the five biggest challenges for K to 12 schools. Number one, the college-ready obsession. It states, this is not me, in affluent committees, you're going to prepare kids to go to a competitive university. There's still this old-fashioned idea. The perceptions are supposed to, the thing is, we should be preparing kids for college and work. They go hand in hand. And it says here, in a perfect world, getting ready for post-secondary and career would be the same thing. I hope we expand into the high schools, because it says, giving students some time to experience different potential career paths in high school, listen to this, it's genius, might help save them from taking out tens of thousands of dollars in loans to figure out what you're going to do. And so, the paradigm is just not getting college-ready. It's college and work-ready together, and we might see curricular change. I think you're going to, more and more. That slide where we went to Dealer Inspire. I'm 67. They had college students, non-college students. They're doing marketing, and the sixth, I graduated, I don't know, 74, all my friends in marketing had their three-piece suit on, getting on the train, going downtown to the office. The same job at Dealer Inspire had everybody dressed in jeans with their hats on and scarves. I don't know how millennials dress. Instead of having a martini lunch, they were eating bananas and apples. And instead of being in an office, they had five different types of rooms and different configurations of chairs to people, for people to work at. It blew me away. Adults sometimes control what happens in American education. We have to get these 20-year-olds and some of our graduates to say what the real world of work is. It's just not college preparation, and we should not just grade ourselves on how many kids go to college. The real grade is, is what Ed said a long time ago, which is, do they have a job, and are they happy? And how about their total well-being? Not to go too much further, because I'm on a roll. But this book asks different companies what they wish schools would teach. Actually, Aramark's in here, who provides their food service.
Custodial maintenance.
Yes, I'm sorry. Custodial maintenance.
Organic life won't be happy.
Organic life would not be happy. I apologize to organic life. Guess what Aramark said? What, what do you wish high schools around the country? A dual course about self-awareness and surviving failure. American islands, my course would be on the value of kindness. AT&amp;T, my commitment to continuous learning would, my commitment would be a commitment to continuous learning. Everything that's in Portrait of a Graduate. So what I'm trying to indicate, and it always takes me an hour to do it, is that there is a fundamental shift. We have to help our students, which I think we're doing a great job with, but we have to help our teachers who've been around for a while. When paradigm shifts occur, it takes time to do that. And our parent community also, that what we thought was a successful American education might not be what a successful American education is now, five years from now, or 10 years from now. So I applaud the district in this work, because I think it's really, really on the forefront of doing the best that we can for our kids. Like, I'm wound up about this, I'll stop.
Millennials aren't reading paper copies of Ed Week.
Thank God for 70, 67-year-olds. Anybody else? I'm sorry, I get going. Thank you. Tell me again. Real briefly, and it will be brief, for legislative update, Dr. Sullivan was correct. The governor did bring a $350 million budget proposal for evidence-based funding, but he put some parameters on it. $150 million would be held in reserve and would not be available if the constitutional amendment is voted down. Same for mandated categorical funding. $51 million was suggested, but same for the 40 million, of that mandated categorical funding would be withheld if they didn't pass the constitutional amendment. As we watch in the legislature, there's already different groups saying, we have to give $350 million to our schools without, with or without the constitutional amendment. So this is, it appears, it doesn't matter what party we're in, sometimes educational funding is held, yeah, held hostage. And so we just have to watch it, because you never know what's going to happen with that stuff, so.
Yes, I'm assuming, and I didn't read, I mean, obviously, I saw the big talking point, which that was, and maybe Karen, you can even answer this, what you're hearing. The hold harmless is still in place, it's just less, it's just less money that they say they are going to give to the evidence-based funding model, so less districts will receive their new evidence-based funding. Yeah, that's what I thought, okay.
Moving on, I attended an I A S B meeting with large districts on Friday. Fifteen large school districts participated in the luncheon, which was really good, along with the entire leadership of I A S B. Questions from the I A S B staff, they were, what issues are you currently facing? What learning and development opportunities would you like to see for large member boards? And what might future opportunities look like? Just for your information, some of the issues that were brought up were equity, superintendent performance evaluation of relationships, not by me, fostering and improving relationships among board members, board succession planning, defining board roles, citizen advisory boards, the delegate assembly structure, and legislative action. So there was a robust discussion for an hour and a half. I am encouraged that I A S B, they have already taken some action. So some of those include a redefinition of the due structure, that's going to be shared in March. They're talking about having a pre-conference workshop that is being planned for large districts at the conference. They're also talking, perhaps having a large district conference strand at the conference. And they have two field directors that now have been assigned to address the needs of large districts. So in a very short time, within a year of discussion with I A S B, among several school districts with them, they seem to be very, very responsive to the needs of our large districts.
Do you have any view of what the 15 districts, like, what percentage of the state population was covered by those 15 districts?
Well, I know Elgin was there.
Uh huh.
Elgin was there. Plainfield was there. Naperville 203 was there. Indian Prairie 204 was there. Wheaton was there. Schaumburg was there. Rockford was not there. Elmhurst was there. Bloomington area was there. So I would guess.
You mean outside of Chicago?
Out of those 15 people, I would say, we probably represented about 20 to 25% of the student population. So I A S B knows this. I mean, they understand the issue much more clearly now, and I, again, to their leadership, I thank them, because I feel they have been responsive to our needs, and to the needs of large districts.
On the, one of the items you mentioned was concern on board and the ability to work together, boards working together. You can always volunteer for us to do our presentation.
Do we want to do it again? Just a dozen. Anybody else? Last but not least, I want to do thank the staff who did the student-teacher open house. Last but not least, I want to do thank the staff who did the student-teacher open house. It was magnificent. There was a real excitement in the room among the student teachers. More, as important, I guess, because I like excited student teachers, is that I thought the district came off really well. I think people, people at the end of the, at the end of the night said, I really want to work for this place, so thanks. It was well-run, and it was great. And also, I understand Ron Johnson also received an award on behalf of the Transportation Department. I think it's called the Tyler Excellence Award for Transportation, so we give him a kudo to and the entire staff in that Transportation Department for doing a great job.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor? All right.